Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the April 14, 2014 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceeding with an invocation offered by Reverend Cynthia Alice Anderson, Senior Minister and Spiritual Leader at Christ Church Unity on Holden Avenue. Reverend Anderson has served as Senior Minister for six years. The Church has served our community for 83 years and supports soul growth, celebration, and belonging. It reaches out to the underserved and those judged harshly by society. The invocation will be followed by the pledge led today by District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz. But everyone, please join me in standing.
Thank you. Please join me as we pray. Dear God, as we pray today, our prayer is for us to know the truth, the very truth that sets us free, that the One Presence and the One Power of God is here present among each of us. The Scriptures say, "Wherever two or more are gathered there, I am in the midst of them." So we know that truth and honor that today. Our prayer is for each of us to be centered in God, knowing that truth and living that truth in the world. Our prayer is always for our leaders at the city level, state, and our world. So we pray today for an energy of peace, of love, understanding, and wisdom to be present here. So to be a part of this meeting, we are grateful and we are blessed. We also honor our Jewish brothers and sisters today on their holy day of Passover. We pray all these things in and after the nature of Jesus Christ, and so it is. Amen.
My prayers will end.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyneum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would everybody put their devices on vibrate or silent? Okay, let's take up the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meetings of March the 31st. Commissioner Ings getting in there with a motion on the minute. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, we have several awards and presentations today. I'm going to begin by calling on Warren Henry to discuss National Community Development Week in the city of Orlando. Warren is our Director of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Sorry, looking for my presentation.
I don't have it up here.
I think he was looking in the back.
Warren, you want me to fill some space here? It's so nice to have a packed City Hall chamber with people with smiles on their faces and happy to be here, not coming to complain about anything.
How about I just read it very quickly?
Works for me.
Okay. All right, well, I'll do that.
This is really getting off to a good start.
Oh, I can tell you what's in each slide, so.
Okay.
Use our imagination.
Anyway, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Commissioners and citizens of Orlando. I'm here today as Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development. The main purpose of the department is the administration of HUD Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBG, and our mission is to maintain sustainable, livable, safe neighborhoods for low and moderate income persons. Since the inception of CDBG 40 years ago in 1974, the main purpose of the program is to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. The CDBG program remains the principal source of revenue for localities for devising flexible solutions to solve lower-income neighborhood problems. This versatile program can fund public services like first-time homebuyer counseling, facilitate job training, construct sidewalks, provide repairs for homeowners, build public facilities like shelters, and many others. Recent examples include the construction of the 250-bed Coalition for the Homeless Men's Service Center, which is a joint project with Orange County. It helped purchase the building housing the Community Food and Outreach Center, and the slide, if I had it, would show the Mayor's Academy, which we hosted there just about 10 days ago. That too was a project that Orange County participated in. We've provided additional parking for the Rosemont Community Center, new sidewalks and driveway aprons in the Monterey neighborhood. We funded transitional housing. We have assisted Habitat for Humanity, their most recent project, the Staghorn Villas, and we'll be participating in the Butler's Preserve, which is just getting underway. We've provided new roofs and soffits for Hope Village. And we fund a wide variety of public services such as housing counseling programs, as I said, including first-time homebuyers, mental health counseling, employment, and many other public services. One of the key features of the CDBG program is a strong citizen participation component. We have public hearings, we publish notices online and in the newspaper, we have advisory boards, of which some of our volunteer advisory members, I believe, are here today, and we have public meetings, so that citizens know what the programs do. Now, the CDBG program was initially funded in 1974 at $4 billion. For the CDBG program to have the same impact on communities it assists, the program would need to be funded at 18.6 billion today instead of the 3.30 billion level in 2014. The constant reduction in funds has eroded the flexibility of the program to adequately address the problems of our community. Considering the ongoing problems of substandard and inadequate housing for low-income households and adding the issue of foreclosure and increased homelessness, while financial resources have been significantly reduced, it often seems daunting for a community to adequately address its needs. However, in order to operate solid programs, we've developed internal institutional knowledge with strong support from the city, experienced and dedicated neighborhood-based development partners and volunteers, and improved leverage with other funds from the state and other financial resources. So CDBG continues into the future as an effective tool. So thank you for joining us for the 40th anniversary of the CDBG program.
Okay, and I have a proclamation. City of Orlando, whereas the week of April 21st through the 26th has been reserved as National Community Development Week to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the home investment program, partnership programs, and whereas the CDBG and home programs provide annual funding, the local governments provide decent, safe, and affordable housing and economic opportunities to low and moderate income persons, and whereas the CDBG and home programs have been administered by the city of Orlando and have positively impacted the city and its citizens, and whereas the CDBG and home programs address prioritized needs as identified through citizen input and seek solutions through private-public partnerships, and whereas the CDBG and home programs are valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the week of April 21st through 26th, 2014, as National Community Development Week in the city of Orlando. All right, Marcia, I think you have the next three, including Volunteer Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and city commissioners, good afternoon to everyone who's here today. National Volunteer Appreciation Month is observed in April, and because of our city's value, how we value volunteer service as a cornerstone of local government, each year Mayor Dyer hosts the Mayor's Annual Volunteer Appreciation Reception. Special thanks to Commissioner Ings, and I'm not sure if any other commissioners, because I was in and out, joined us for the volunteer appreciation reception earlier. We had many of our volunteers, our valued volunteers who are here today with us earlier in the overlook room. We are honored to have today with us Linda Lammon Gonzalez, who is representing Volunteer Florida, she's on their board, and our local representative, Linda, thanks for being here. Thank you. Of course, Linda's of the Orlando Magic, we all know that. And then, of course, we also have Suzanne Richards, who is our State Director of the Corporation for National Community Service, who is here with us. Suzanne, thanks for being here. And a special guest all the way from Washington DC, Jennifer Nay, who is the Managing Director of Voices for National Service. Jennifer, welcome. Earlier this month, on April 1st, Mayor Dyer hosted Orlando's Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service with a Read Around the School event, which Commissioners Stewart and Commissioner Ings joined us for, and this was a time when more than 65 local AmeriCorps, SeniorCorps, and Volunteers in Service to America, or VISTAs, from the local area, joined us to read books about the importance of volunteering to all students at Grand Avenue Elementary School. There were school officials and our Principal, Lino Rodriguez, were there, and they were excited to have this emphasis on reading spotlighted at their school. And let me tell you, the children loved it. Also, while we were there at Grand Avenue, the children asked for books, and we are helping them to provide them. Also joining us before this special event was Wendy Spencer, the CEO of the Corporation for National Community Service, you'll see a few pictures on the screen, who joined the mayor and me to kick off the Mayor's Day activities. The Corporation provides hundreds of foster grandparents, AmeriCorps members, AmeriCorps VISTAs, RSVP volunteers, and other valued national service providers, and more than $3.5 million in resources to help our children, youth, seniors, and families in metro Orlando. Today, as I mentioned, we have more than 150 of our valued city employee volunteers, citizen volunteers, and national service volunteer members here, and Mayor Dyer, if you will read the proclamation with special thank yous.
Thank you, Marcia. City of Orlando proclamation, whereas President Barack Obama has designated the month of April as the time to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers and national service members throughout our nation, and whereas last year more than 65 million Americans gave their time and service to our nation, which is a testament to the compassion and generosity of the American spirit, and whereas the city of Orlando commemorates National Volunteer Month by recognizing its valued volunteers and national service members at the annual Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Reception and the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, and whereas the city of Orlando is committed to encouraging volunteerism and national service among its employees, citizens, partners, businesses, and organizations, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of April 2014 as Volunteer Appreciation Month in the city of Orlando. I don't think everybody's going to fit.
Anyone who would like to take a group picture, please join Mayor Dyer up here for a picture. It's not required.
Why don't you just stand up?
There we go.
Next contestant on the news. I'll see how about three to five.
Thank you, Ed. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Phil. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come right on through, everybody.
Do we want to do the fourth one and then come back to sexual assault? Yeah, I think it just, if we leave the volunteer.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Commissioners. We have one other presentation that's related to volunteer service, and Mayor Dyer has given me the go-ahead to just introduce that one. So if anyone wants to stay, you can. If you have to leave, we understand. Not a problem. We know everybody's, some people have to get back to work. In February, Mayor Dyer was selected to receive the prestigious 2014 Local Leadership Award by Voices for National Service. This Local Leadership Award is presented annually to only two mayors who support and encourage national service programs in their cities. The city of Orlando's commitment to, and dedication to programs like the Orlando Partnership for School Success, Orlando Cares, Public Allies, RSVP, Foster Grandparents, and others, including Together for Tomorrow, make this recognition very possible here in Orlando. And I would like to introduce my friend and colleague who has traveled here from DC, Jennifer Nay, who is the Managing Director of Voices for National Service for the presentation. Jennifer?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be with you today. Voices for National Service is working to shine a spotlight on the work that our service members and volunteers are doing nationwide and working to expand national service opportunities. Our awards event in February recognizes leaders from the public, private, nonprofit sectors who are helping to build a culture of citizenship, service, and responsibility within America. Among our 2014 winners were the Secretary of Interior Sally Jewell, Senators Barbara McCulkey and John McCain, mayors from Mesa and Philadelphia, and we're so honored to include Mayor Dyer in that list of distinguished winners based on nominations we received from his constituents. Business in Orlando kept Mayor Dyer from being able to join us in Washington, but I was really honored and excited that Marcia invited us to come here to Orlando so we could present the mayor with his award in front of his constituents and his volunteers, national service members. As Marcia said, the Local Leadership Award is for leadership and innovation and leveraging national service to meet local needs, and Mayor Dyer and his Chief Service Officer, Marcia Hope Goodwin, are very deserving honorees. We've created a short video to describe the work that they've been doing in those communities. If you could roll the video for us, please. I think the volume needs to be turned up. Uh-oh.
And the lives of the city's youth. As an active member of the Cities of Service Coalition and the first city in Florida to receive a Cities of Service Leadership Grant from the Rockefeller Foundation and Bloomberg Philanthropies, Orlando has been hard at work implementing a comprehensive volunteer plan focused on the city's schools. Fueled by the energy of Orlando residents and the city's nonprofit partners, Mayor Dyer's Orlando Cares Initiative seeks to improve the academic achievement, attendance, and career readiness of students throughout Orlando. Mayor Dyer and Florida Governor Rick Scott received one of the first governor-mayor initiative grants awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service, expanding the number of AmeriCorps members providing educational support at 17 Orlando community centers and public schools. Demonstrating leadership through action, Mayor Dyer often joins local residents in volunteer projects, emphasizing the responsibility of residents to contribute to the well-being of the community. He personally leads Mayor Buddy's Book Club to encourage leisure time reading among the city's youth. Over 1,000 students are avid participants. Mayor Dyer's tireless work in Orlando is a testament to the impact service can have in transforming communities and should stand as an example to communities throughout the nation. Voices for National Service honors Mayor Dyer with the Local Leadership Award.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll do the last one? Okay, I do, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, and at this time, I would like to introduce a proclamation that I will have my colleague and associate Louis Damiani, who is the Executive Director of the Victim Service Center, actually introduce to you. The city of Orlando strongly supports the efforts of the Victim Service Center and law enforcement, local partners, and citizens to actively engage in public efforts to prevent sexual violence and help survivors connect with services. The Victim Service Center is a leader in that area, and it is my pleasure at this time to introduce Executive Director Louis Damiani.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Commissioners. Thanks for allowing us to be here today for just a moment to talk a little bit about the Victim Service Center of Central Florida. Our mission at the Victim Service Center is to serve victims of crime. We serve those that are victims of traumatic circumstances, of sexual assault, and other types of violent crimes, and we do that through a variety of ways. We do it through therapy, we do it through immediate crisis response, and we also do it through public awareness and outreach. And part of the services that we provide, one aspect is, is that we are what's called the Certified Rape Crisis Center for both Orange and Osceola Counties. And what that means is that we operate a 24/7 hotline, and in the case of Orange County, we have a forensic facility. In addition to our main corporate offices, we also have a forensic facility in Osceola County as well. And if there is a sexual assault that happens in either county, law enforcement immediately calls our team of crisis intervention folks. They're all masters-level social workers or licensed mental health counselors, and they respond, and they also immediately dispatch a forensic nurse. We have the highest level of forensic nurses also on our team. Our agency is about 21 people, 15, 16 full-time, and about six additional forensic nurses. And they respond, and I'm proud to tell you that in Orange County, our standard is one to respond within one hour of a call, and we do it in 33 minutes. So it's a great program, and again, just as one piece of what we do. According to the CDC, one in five women will experience sexual assault at some point in their lifetime, and one in 71 men. So the statistics are high, and we're just proud to be part of the service network. We also work very, very closely with every single law enforcement agency in Central Florida, all 13, and Orange County, the three, and Osceola as well, and we have what's called a Sexual Assault Response Team, a SART, and we meet quarterly, and we do that with all the law enforcement agencies, with the emergency room representatives, state attorney, attorney general's offices, so we have a very comprehensive system of response, and we work to make sure that we are offering the best quality, quickest response that we can, and try to help people get from what potentially is the worst experience in their life to some sense of normalcy as quick as possible. And that's what we do, and we're proud to do it, and we're honored to do it. So part of our efforts, as I mentioned, is part of our mission, is our outreach, and every year, in the month of April, it is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So we wear these little sexual assault teal ribbons to represent that, and I left one for each of you, and I hope that you'll also wear it, and if somebody asks you what that's for, please tell them that it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and you have a great asset and resource here in your community that you can reach out to anytime, 24/7. And what's also really cool, and I know I'm running short on time, is that when you call our hotline, we will pick it up by the third ring, and when it gets picked up by the third ring, it's picked up by a masters-level counselor, and that counselor is somebody that's going to work with you throughout the course of the duration that you work with us. Sometimes it's very short, sometimes it's two, three years. So we're proud and honored to be a part of the program, and we just want people to know that they don't have to go it alone, that we have qualified, certified people here in our community to reach out and help them get back to some sense of normalcy, and that together as a community, if we work together, if we inform people, we can make a difference, and we can stop this sexual assault in our community. So thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here today.
City of Orlando proclamation, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every resident of the city of Orlando, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community because the statistics indicate that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped in their lifetimes, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and whereas the Victim Service Center of Central Florida Inc. is the Certified Rape Crisis Center in Orange County, providing the community with 24/7 confidential emergency crisis response, victim advocacy, forensic examinations to collect DNA evidence, long-term therapy, support groups, and outreach and prevention programs, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim April 2014 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Orlando. Okay, and for the last presentation, I'm going to call on Dean Grandin to make an introduction relating to the Healthy Weight Community Champion Recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. As Director of Get Active Orlando and as Division Manager for the City Planning Division within the Economic Development Department, within the Economic Development Department, it is my pleasure to introduce to you this afternoon Dr. Kevin Sharon. Since 2004, Dr. Sharon has been the Health Officer and Director of the Florida Department of Health in Orange County. An accomplished physician and clinical professor, he is deeply committed to improving the health of the citizens of the City of Orlando and Orange County. His many accomplishments over the last decade have focused on leading community engagement to address health equity and infant mortality, including the All-In Anti-Smoking Campaign, a $6.6 million Community Putting Prevention to Work Federal Award, as well as securing numerous other awards such as the National Association of County and City Health Officials' Best and Most Promising Practice Award, and the Florida Davis Productivity Award. I'd like to now call on Dr. Sharon to come to the podium and present the Healthy Weight Community Champion Recognition to you, Mayor Dyer, as well as our Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. This is really about the City of Orlando and what you all have done as Healthy Weight Community Champions. So Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this award is for you and the work that the City of Orlando has accomplished, and its recognition by the State of Florida, State Surgeon General, Dr. John Armstrong, for what the City of Orlando, the City Beautiful, has done in this regard. Between November of 2013 and 2014, local governments across the state were asked to submit their best practices for working on fitness, for working on wellness programs, for working on nutrition programs, and the City of Orlando stood out among the crowd. So these are the best practice policies exemplified by Healthy Weight Community Champions, and Orlando is one of thirty-seven municipalities, or counties, or government entities which has received this award. So it's quite an honor. And I personally applaud the City of Orlando for the roles that you've played, including seven thousand square foot wellness center, employee wellness center, having a wellness coordinator who I met today. You know, you've really gone all out for this. In fact, public health department employees are also benefiting from some of what you've done. Your employees and spouses have access to eleven community centers, fitness rooms, swimming pools. The city has received the prestigious Fitness Management Magazine NOVA VII Award for Excellence in Health and Wellness. So you're no strangers to this realm, to this business. You're even addressing weight management with cooking demonstrations for your employees. Your vending machines have been retrofitted and have healthy choices as menus, as does your cafe situated here at City Hall. Your nutrition consultants teach healthy cooking to city employees and youth who participate in the city's after-school programs. And Great Works Community Action Plan includes specific goals to address and improve access to active transportation. Now, these are the best practices, and you have positively impacted the lives of many of your employees, residents, and visitors to the City Beautiful, and continue to help prevent chronic disease and recognize the community to lead healthy lives. This is the biggest driver, the weight of our community is the biggest driver, the weight of us as individuals, of chronic diseases, and it's a tremendous cost to communities, to business, and you are to be commended for working on this prevention initiative. This Community Champions Award is part of the State of Florida's Healthiest Weight Initiative. And that's a public-private collaboration between state agencies, local government, non-for-profit organizations, businesses, schools, faith-based organizations, and entire communities to help our citizens, our children, our adults, to make consistent, informed choices about healthy eating and active living. And this city has been doing this for years. So congratulations to being one of the communities that was singled out as the State of Florida's Recognized Healthy Community Champion. And not least of which is to also thank Get Active Orlando, which Dean Grandin presented on behalf of as the initiative that you led so many years ago with a Robert Wood Johnson grant in promoting active living by design and healthy eating over the last ten years. So thank you again, Mayor and City Commissioners.
Can anyone else here in this part of the wall state of Orlando? Yes.
So Commissioner Ings, did you see in that video how if you wear a different colored tie every day, it doesn't look like all the pictures were taken on the same day?
(laughing).
Let's move to the Mayor's Update. I have just a few things. Last week after the State of the City, I was joined by Commissioners Linum and Stewart and Ings, I believe, were there as we kicked off the new Grapefruit Limo Line. And that's the east-west second leg of three total legs for our limo system. The expansion has fifteen stations with new destinations between Thornton Park and the Paramore neighborhoods, the Publix is on the route, County Administration Building, Health Department, and eventually, well, the federal courthouse. And the third line will come up and down Huey and create a village. So that's one more option for our Sun Rail riders. Commissioners, I'd like to give you a quick update on the City Council District Five election last Tuesday, the eighth. Candidates Juan Linum and Regina Hill will go into a runoff, and voters will decide that election on Tuesday, May sixth. I would like to invite everyone to join Commissioner Ortiz and myself for an open house to celebrate it, if you can believe it, the ten-year anniversary of the Ola Office this Wednesday, April sixteenth, from three to seven at the Primrose Center. And I just want to highlight a couple of things on the agenda. Today, there's a QTI agreement to support the expansion of Power DMS, which is a tech company headquartered in downtown. Company currently has forty-six employees and plans to create an additional sixty-five high-wage jobs if this is approved. And as I mentioned last week, Orlando was recently named one of America's most promising tech hubs. And then finally, on the agenda today is an item to move forward with the design and construction of a new police, Orlando Police Headquarters, which will give OPD a modern home and will be funded largely out of savings created by Greenworks Orlando. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our Commissioners an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda or update you on important activities in their districts, and we rotate the order that that occurs. And today, Commissioner Ortiz is first up.
Well, Mayor, I'm going to surprise you because I'm going to save my time to double up on next city council. So I'm going to pass.
Nice.
Thanks for yielding your time.
Commissioner Stewart.
Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you for yielding your time to me. I'm going to take the next couple of hours and talk a little bit about... No, I haven't got much, but I do want to say a couple of things. First of all, happy Passover and happy Easter coming up to those in our community. Had a great budget workshop today, and I say great because we have a lot of really wonderful people that work for us inside the city, and they have a great team. Rebecca's done a good job, and did a great job explaining kind of the issues we have with revenue. And I love doing that on a workshop and love recording that and getting a chance to get that out to our constituents so they can see the same things that we're seeing on a regular basis. Three quick things in the community. The Audubon Park is having their fourth annual Kids Fest on April twenty-sixth from twelve to four. Edgewood Drive, as, I mean, the College Park Partnerships doing their dancing on the drive on May tenth. And then the Ivanhoe Village is instrumental, obviously, and the Fringe Festival that's coming on May fourteenth. So you guys mark your calendars, it's a great event for our community. On the agenda, thank you for commenting about the OPD Headquarters, Mayor. I'm excited about what we expect to get out of that, and anxious to get a new home for the Chief and his guys. And also, I just make a quick announcement. I'm going to be abstaining on Item C2 today. This sticker item is a grant that will go cover a sidewalk that goes down Glen Lane. Glen Lane is adjacent to the property that the Christian Service Center. And not knowing which side of the road it's on, and I've decided to go ahead and abstain on this issue, and I'll turn the paperwork in to the clerk. So that's all that I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to District Four, Commissioner Shan.
Thank you, Mayor. And over the weekend, we dedicated the historic Washington Street Bridge and Dixon Azalea Park with a historic plaque from the State of Florida. Thank you, Richard Forbes, for all your help with that. And then we had a neighborhood house and garden tour that was very successful. So the Lake La Sona Historic Neighborhood Association is doing wonderful things, and they got a lot of support from Lake Yola Heights. So we really liked seeing our historic districts working together to showcase their beautiful neighborhoods. On May tenth coming up, Scooters for Hooters, one of the largest breast cancer fundraisers that we have, is going to be happening at Lake Yola Park, so please put that on your calendars and support this great initiative to help women get breast exams that cannot afford them. This is a wonderful group, Libby's Legacy, and proud to support them. On the agenda today, Item C4, very glad the Minnesota Planning Board denied substandard lots in Irwin Manor, that's Commissioner Stewart's district, but I know we're having a lot of pressure for these substandard lot sizes throughout our neighborhoods, and I'm very glad the Minnesota Plannings Board is doing the right thing. And on Item C9, the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Agreement with Orlando Health, and they will voluntarily pay in their fair share of the ad valorem, which is wonderful. We're glad that they've been a partner through this process, even though they're not for profit and don't have to. So anyway, that's a clarification on what we're doing with the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, and that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five. Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for those reports. But it brings to mind the report by Orin, and a referral I made to him, and we, our relationship's been so close to Habitat. Do we actually help with Habitat houses for rehab? Just check it up. Maybe after council I can see you. It's just very, very interesting, but thank you for your work. A couple of announcements I want to make, and that Grapefruit Line, BRT, you know, is something Paramore was not originally included in, so we're very, very thankful that that was successful. Kickoff, and I'm just excited about everything we do on the east side or downtown. We can move over to the west, and we've been very consistent about it once we make the request, have it done. Just a few items on the agenda, actually just two. HJ High has, is ranked number one for the police station. I've been here sixteen years. We've been moving that police station for sixteen years. So it's really good to see, at least we have a contractor, it's going somewhere. It's going to be built. But the one unique thing no one has said anything about is HJ High's minority participation, minority women participation. All of the years I've been here, I've never seen that level of participation on one grant. This is not a two-hundred, a million-dollar, four-hundred-million-dollar project. Maybe it is, maybe we can up the ante on that. But, and it may be, but you've got to applaud a company that's been in Paramore for over sixty years and the kind of participation. I did not see Aria Burns on there, but he is, I think, one of the partners. But just, oh, there's Rosen Brito back there. Okay, there he is, he is. To see Rosen Brito, Aria Burns, Malan Engineers, JCB, and not to talk about the women, another whole group. So that's a great example of how to do work that we ought to be doing in this city because we are a very diverse populated city, and our industries, we're diversifying those, and this is the right thing to do. So I'm just excited. I don't see them here.
There he is.
Oh, that's...[1528.11][1528.11](laughing). Okay. Right, that's right. You're the one that started helping us with the dumpster in the... Okay, I'm sorry. It came out to help us do our cleanup. I am so sorry, Mayor. I didn't recognize me. He has a little spiky hairdo like Patty.
It's catching on, Commissioner, is all I got to say.
Well, I think he's had it long, much longer than yours, actually, when I think about it. But anyway, I'm glad you're here, and I want to commend your team on what they're doing with that MWVE and to help with Gennaro and all of that stuff. There's one other little piece, but the C2, I think it is C2 with the sidewalks around the lake regarding, I think that was a great grant. We were talking about grants this morning. Well, a lot of our grants help us do things, and if they go away, they go away. We've already got the sidewalks, they aren't going to roll up and go away too. We would have already implemented what the grant was intended for. So that was great to hear. I know that we had, I had a meeting with Mayor Jacobs, Byron and Gennaro, and I'm there, and I know you're fully aware of it because Byron has briefed you, and that is maybe having the Blueprint Office engaged a little bit at the airport when we can with our workforce, and particularly bringing that advertisement for those jobs into the city because we use the airport, we want to see more minority participation there, and we want to be able to help them. Mayor serves on that board, and our meeting we thought with Phil and Mayor Jacobs and Stan and those, very, very, very exciting possibilities for the future. So I think that is about it in terms of agenda items. I'm hoping we will be very brief for the rest of it then. Thank you.
Moving to District Six, Commissioner Ings.
Well... What a challenge. But we'll start off with Item H1 on the agenda, and that's the 2014 Burn Criminal Justice Innovation Program Grant. And Chief Mina, obviously, this is a great grant that will do lots of things for our communities, and specifically, it's an innovation program grant that targets neighborhoods with crime hotspots and seeks to empower our neighborhoods, and that's a great thing because that's all that we have on this particular council been doing for quite some time. So this gives us a little more leverage, and I think that would be great for all of our neighborhoods. But I'd just like to point out in District Six, for example, we have such neighborhoods as Carver Shores and Richmond Heights and Grand Avenue Holden Heights and the Royal Summit Apartments there at Rio Grande and Twenty-Ninth Street. So a lot of those do have areas that can contain or do contain some hotspots, and wherein the police department has been working hard on that. It's really getting our citizens more empowered too, so that they will not feel too afraid to get more actively involved. So this would be a great opportunity for all of our communities. And then, Mayor, I'd just like to say on your State of the City address on Church Street between Garland and Orange Avenue, with the Sun Rail Bus Train in the background, that was a great day and a great speech that you gave, very informative, and you did kind of warn the press out there as relates with our budget, how things may be looking, but we have really been a champion for the city in spite of all of our challenges. And it's been because of the great leadership of yourself and also this council and our city staff, so thank you all so very much. And then I had a, attended a 12th Annual West Orange Chamber Best Fest, A Taste of West Orange, and it was held in Veranda Park in District Six in Metro West. This was with Steena Duva in the West Orange Chamber. I had plenty of local restaurants and caterers and also interactive exhibits from local businesses throughout West Orange County, and it was a real great success. a real great success. So lots of people, and they enjoyed themselves so very much. Also, at the Smith Center, I founded the Red Tie Basketball Academy to provide boys and girls ages 5 to 8 to learn the basic rules, concepts, court layout, and player positions of basketball. And so the Commissioner Samuel B. Ing's Red Tie versus Orange County Magic game was held on Friday, March 31st, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. Orange County Magic, however, team won with the score of 15 to 8, and it was just really great seeing our young kids involved. And then, of course, the Smith Center Red Tie Basketball Academy banquet was held on March 26th at the James R. Smith Center, and we had the team players, the coaches, and celebrated the end of the basketball season, and yours truly provided a full course dinner for the families of the kids that were there attending the banquet. The Smith Center staff who volunteered their time to coach the youth of the Red Tie Basketball Academies. Six teams were Tavarius Roberson, coordinator, Nate Webster, volunteer coach, Ebony Deputy, volunteer coach, Akiva Wilson, volunteer coach, and Erica Smith, volunteer coach. We had a team mom award winner, Ms. Debbie Douglas, and she supported the teams and provided snacks for the kids throughout the basketball season. Then on Friday, April 11th, I had the District 6 Spring to Health Bingo Social and Health Fair, and this was held at the L. Claudia Allen Senior Center. Our seniors enjoyed a bingo tournament, light refreshments, and free health screenings. Vendors who provided free services were Care Plus, Health Plans, CAC, Florida Medical Centers, Stay Well Health Management, True Age, Humana, Simply Health Care, Freedom Health, and the Optimum Health Care Incorporated. I would like to thank Herb Williams, the Center Manager for L. Claudia Allen and his staff, and my aides Sylvia Wills and Cynthia Wilson, who helped coordinate this event. And then on Saturday, April 12th, I had the District 6 Excellent Health Fair and Easter Egg Hunt, and that was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. Childrens and families enjoyed a fun-filled day of food, family outdoor activities, health fair, traditional Easter egg hunt. And the purpose of this event is to bring families together to celebrate the spring season and to bring awareness to the increasing obesity epidemic among our children. Free health screenings and demonstrations from local fitness facilities were provided. Festivities included a traditional Easter egg hunt in three different age groups, inflatable obstacle course, live entertainment, free food, and prizes. And I would like to thank our entertainers, Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation, the Onic Prodigy Kids, the Anonik Grace Dance Group, the Young Blacks in Action, and of course, our mistress of ceremony was the Cora Miles Jefferson of CMJ Resources, radio host of the 411. And I would like to thank our vendors who provided free screenings as well as information and resources relative to nutrition, fitness, and they are included Sunshine Health, First Veterans Kid's Care, Lupus Foundation, Second Chance, TCM, WIC, Five Links, Junior League, Orlando Fire Department, Unity in Uniform, Orange County Library System, and Bill Frederick Park. They had some animals out there for the kids, and I'd like to thank L. Bethel Temple, who provided two bobbers to give free haircuts to the kids, and our sponsors of Universal Studios, Sunshine Health, and the Orlando Police Department honors Joseph Lundey, the Distinguished Officer of the Year on March 19th, 2014, and I know there's supposed to be some pictures on that, I thought they were there, but also the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles from Nickelodeon Suites Resort also recognized Officer Lundey for the Distinguished Officer of the Year on March 25th. Officer Joseph Lundey has gone above and beyond his normal requirements, job requirements while serving as a school resource officer, and now as my police liaison officer for District 6. The most notable aspect of Joe's accomplishments includes his involvement in Operation Positive Direction. As a District 6 Liaison Officer, Joseph Lundey has already made a positive impact in the community and has proven to be the most valuable asset. As a matter of fact, Joe and I are following up on crimes that have occurred, burglaries to businesses and some residents within our neighborhoods. So we're getting firsthand knowledge from the people there and getting them to be more actively involved in preventing crime in their community. The last thing I have here, Mayor, is the Eminence Celebration, Orange County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated hosted their 9th Annual Eminence Scholarship Gala, and the first place winner received a $4,000 scholarship award, and every participant, and there were about 11 participants, young men and young ladies, received at least a $1,000 scholarship award. President Melinda Poole and the Orange County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority celebrated these young aspiring young ladies and gentlemen who are determined, exceptional, loyal, and tenacious, and it was just really great seeing these kids, these young kids, high school students with their parents, and you had the mother-son dance as well as the father-daughter dance. And the young ladies were in their white gowns, and the young men were in their black tuxedos. So this was great, and it makes me feel good to see that there are some positive things happening with our kids in our community, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And District 1, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to echo Commissioner Ing's comments about the State of the City. I think you did a great job representing us, certainly pointing out a lot of the good things, but acknowledging we have some challenges, and I know we're prepared to help explore solutions, but thank you for doing us proud there. We appreciate it. Two things on the agenda real quick. C1, I said earlier at the workshop, but I have to declare a conflict on the first item of the ARB minutes. I have a business partner involved in that, so I need to abstain from that vote, and that's the Mariposa Town Homes. Second thing I wanted to talk about was Item C4, the MPB minutes. One of the items in my district is the Pacern at Moss Park Apartment Project. It's the master plan. And certainly, apartment developers get a bad rap, and sometimes they deserve it, but in this case, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I've known the Pacern organization for over 20 years. They're based here in Orlando. They not only build their own product, but they operate it and they hold it. So it's a great addition to District 1, because I know they're gonna build it the right way, and they're gonna be there to own and operate. So I'm thrilled to see those folks getting the master plan approved. And with that, I think I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with my conflict as well as Commissioner Stewart's.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Sheehan. They're all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Let's, without objection, recess the city council meeting, convene the CRA. We have a couple sets of meeting minutes. The first item, number one, is the Advisory Board Meeting Minutes from February 26, 2014. Is there a motion to accept those?
There's a proposal.
Motion to accept those meeting minutes by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. And then approval of minutes from the CRA for March 17th.
Same.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart. I'll take that as a second. By Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. And the substantive item, number three. Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Item number three is approving amoeba funding, the amoeba funding entered agreement for the Summican LLC doing business as Sunshine Corn Laundry. This is, of course, it's been quite a while since we've actually done amoeba award, and so I wanted to, if I could, provide some context for the program. The program was approved by the CRA back in 2006 and was updated in 2010. The program has been and remains a focus for, a focus on small business retention and creation within the Paramore area, and provides funding an amount of not to exceed $40,000 to qualifying businesses. There is amoeba advisory board that is made up of seven members, one member each from BBIF, HBIF, and the National Entrepreneurial Center, as well as a member of the CRA staff, City of Orlando's Business and Financial Services Staff, is chaired by the Director of Urban Development, Walter Hawkins, and there's a City of Orlando Economic Development Department Staff Member as well. The advisory board, of course, takes in all of the applications and reports from amoeba consultant. They take a look at and analyze business plan, including financial projections, the history of the business, making sure they have a good current lease they're in good standing with, proof of the minimum investment, which is now 10%, and of course, there's a criminal background check and the prerequisite credit checks that are done as Since 2006, there have actually been 12 awards granted, actually 13 awards made, 12 here. One was never funded at all, so it's not showing here, and a total amount of $421,710 have been awarded. Of that, $376,677 have actually been distributed. Our applicant today is Sunshine Corn Laundry. It's owned and operated by Sue and David McCreary, who make up the Summican LLC, and again, they do business at Sunshine Corn Laundry. These owners have more than 28 years of experience in the corn laundry business, as you can see here, and this business is located within this subject area, 700 West Livingston. And though they purchased the business back in 2010, this business under prior owners has existed in the area for more than 30 years. Again, in 2010, they purchased the business at a purchase price of $295,000. They, as you can see there, they have paid down within 42 months, $210,000 of that, of the debt utilized in that purchase. And due to that rapid and very aggressive paydown of debt, they've allowed some of the, that subsequently allowed some of the revenue-producing equipment to become obsolete and in disrepair. Overall industry overview, there are 35,000 laundromats, corn laundromats in the country, with 1,000 of those operating in the state of Florida. So 60-year, $5 billion industry cash flow is a low of $15,000 up to $200,000. Market values, you can see there fluctuate between $50,000 and $1 million. This is a look at the subject. The storefront of Sunshine Corn Laundry, well-kept, and the interior. Target market, Sunshine currently serves Paramore, and of course, they're in the proximity of the future Creative Village and hope to pick up additional client base when Creative Village is up and running, particularly from the students that may be living there and others who would need those services. Amoeba consultant recommended that they look into various branding and marketing options. So far, they've used just word of mouth primarily as marketing. Insofar as future competition for the business, we see the futures being bright for them, and there's quite some barriers for new companies coming in. As you can see, there's a $3,000 per washing machine impact fee, which makes it really a sizable income, a sizable expense to come into the area now. So we don't believe that there will be new competitors coming in, in the short term. They do have two small competitors within a three-mile area, both of which, neither of which, I should say, are operated at the level of Sunshine. Sunshine is seen as being more safe. They have more security, they're a cleaner, neater appearance, conveniently located, of course, on a corner and comfort for its customers. They presently outsourced their folding and cleaning and washing and drying and folding services, but they have plans to bring those in-house to employees by next year. From the sales and financial projection standpoint, you can see here that during the first year, they increased revenue by some 21%, and subsequent years, between 5 and 7% a year, has been average increases. 2012 and 13 revenue was around the $190,000 mark, and projections call for continuation of the 5 to 7% annual increase in sales, with cost variations, of course, for natural gas utilities and other variables. With the funds that they're requesting, they removed five fairly inefficient washers, as you can see, that are obsolete now, manufactured between 1986 and 88, and replaced them with newer generation electronically controlled washers. These are not new washers, these are actually refurbished. These industrial washers are very expensive, so rather than trying to get a new one, they're going with five reconditioned and refurbished washes, and that's why, and the prices of those fluctuate as to the actual inventory that's available on the market at the time. So in your package, you may have seen some prices that have been blacked out and changed. Every time we go to market on this, we're subject to whatever inventory is in the market at that time, and so the price can change within a certain variable amount. Also, they were to remove two of the water heating units that are also obsolete and put into high-efficiency tankless heaters, do some repairs on some of their dryers, eight of the dryers, and some other small capital equipment. This is a breakdown as of the February 26 amoeba board review, and we think that the actual grant will be consistent with this, again, with the prices of the two top items, the four, the five washers altogether, fluctuating based on what's available at the market, when they go to market for the refurbished, the particular refurbished machines. Conditions of funding, as always, will provide, that the applicant will have to provide us with a design action plan, adapt plan. This plan basically gives us the details of how the applicant will, intends to implement the recommendations or the requirements that both the consultant as well as our program manager have recommended. And also, shall remain in the open for business at Sunshine Corn Laundry. It doesn't say here, but they should stay either at that location or within the subject area in Paramore for at least 36 months, and remain open for at least 40 hours per week. Signage that complies with all the pertinent signage regulations is to be developed and subject to approval of the Appearance Review Board, of course, and again, all other signed regulations, and is to be transparent in nature. And very importantly, the grantee shall continue to seek and receive technical assistance from an approved economic development organization within our area. Grantee currently has a lease with Austin Investments LLC for the facility, and it shall remain in good standing as they are now with that lease. And finally, the grantee shall execute a security agreement as well as a continuing guarantee simultaneously with this agreement. Based upon those, as well as the recommendations of the CRA Advisory Board, staff has requested approval from the CRA for amoeba funding and an agreement, and a security agreement between the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Summican LLC, DBA Sunshine Corn Laundry, and authorization for the Chair of the CRA and the Executive Director of the CRA to execute said agreement, subject to review and approval of the City Attorney's Office.
I'm gonna move approval, and I want to make a comment when we...
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ing. Discussion, Commissioner Lyman.
Mayor, Thomas mentioned it in his summary, and had he not, I was gonna say, it is bigger, it is cleaner, it is safer. I've been there. You let your washer or dryer go out at home, you will find your laundromat somewhere nearby. And I have gone to all of them, but I would recommend a little shrubbery, you know, just the, it's always clean and neat around there, but you know, you can always dress up your business with a...
Beautiful.
More, a better landscaping, so. But I'm really happy with the way they keep that building going and the services you get there. I've been there. They didn't know me, and I didn't know them, but I needed the equipment. So I said, can your washer or dryer give out? But I do have a new one in the last few years. But you will go circling around the community until you find you a laundromat. I'll go to your relatives' houses, and sometimes in the middle of the night, in the middle of the day, you can't get in, so.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Further discussion, Commissioner Stewart.
Thomas, a couple of quick questions. I didn't get a chance to talk with you prior to the meeting, so I apologize. I noticed that they're leasing the property from a landlord. I also noticed that there's $44,000 worth of requests, but based upon how they acquired the equipment, that they're only gonna get $40,000 out of that. That's correct?
Correct. Yes, the program caps each award at a high of $40,000.
Right, right. But they've recommended... But they've recommended 44, and if they can get the washers and dryers cheaper, they've got some other items already built in that they can make up the $40,000 with, which I haven't got any issue with.
But also, there's a 10% equity from the applicant.
Okay. That's what that is?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. I didn't realize that. The other question I have is that of that $44,000, some of those seem to be building enhancement, tankless washer, I mean, tankless heaters, water heater, those seem to be a building enhancement, whereas the idea being that the washers and dryers, if he were to move someplace else, could be picked up and taken and reinstalled someplace else. So I'm a little bit, it's a little uncomfortable to me. I think it's the right decision, I think it's the right group, I think it's the right people that are there, but philosophically, it seems to me that the landlord is gonna end up getting something out of this based upon the agreement we have with the tenant. And so it kind of leaves us a little...
My only response to that, I understand the Commissioner's concern. I would remind the Commissioner that the program does allow capital improvements within a lease premises, number one, so it does qualify. Number two, I can't speak, of course, for the McCrearies, but my understanding is that they have intention of staying in that location long-term and perhaps attempting to purchase the location.
Yeah, well, I notice that the lease is six and a half years long, and that's plenty of time to do all the things we wanna do. I just didn't, philosophically, is that...
I understand.
A water heater is a little different than...
Than washing machines or something else.
Washing machine and dryer and tables and installation of those kind of things. They're just a little bit different than that.
Do you know that, yes.
All right, thank you very much, Thomas.
Thank you, sir.
Except that water heater is very essential there, to carry on your business. That's a business item, so it's the right thing to do.
Sure.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Any further business come with CRA?
There's none.
Then we will stand adjourned, and we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors, and the item that we have before us is the companion item to C9, which we voted on as city council already, so is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ing. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Brooke, any further business for the, that's not, she left. So we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting and reconvene the city council meeting, and we have three ordinances on second reading. Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance to the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by amending the city's future land use map designation from residential medium-intensity to office-low intensity on certain real property generally located north of Vassar Street, south of Rugby Street, east of Holly Lane, and west of Edgewater Drive, comprised of .179 acres, more or less, amending the zoning classification from R3B TWSVAR to O1TWSVAR for the same real property. Directing amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, corrections, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
That's actually a three.
Yeah, I was also gonna say.
That's yours, Robert.
So I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city's certain land generally located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Narcoosi Road and McCoy Road in a price of 25.21 acres, more or less, providing legislative findings and for the revision of the city's boundaries, providing for severability, corrections, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by amending the city's future land use map designation, assigning residential low-intensity to certain real property generally located north of Delridge Avenue, south of Webster Avenue, and west of Neptune Drive, and addressed as 1148 Webster Avenue, comprised of .226 acres, more or less, assigning the initial zoning classification from R1AAW in part and R1AAWRP in part for the same real property. Directing amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, corrections, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And so the motion carries. That concludes the official business, and we have no general appearance request today, so that will conclude our meeting. Thank you for joining us on the web, on the TV, or here in council chambers.